Good, how about you? Good.
Good, good.
What is your beautiful reputation?
Tracy Holt, Vivian.
How old is she? Uh, never mind. About a month, yeah.
Oh, gosh.
And I was from... He hardly came over, so.
He has some great excitement to meetings, doesn't he, Tracy?
Oh, yeah. Oh, hey, why don't you probably come in and say, "Hey"?
Well, internet? Oh, no, broken place?
Yeah, broken place. She's gonna go watch her team.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Poor thing. I think she's gonna have a good season, too. Like, she's gonna play quite a bit.
Of course.
Yeah. She's pretty bummed.
How long in the house?
Three weeks, for sure. And then we go back for more after this, possibly three more weeks. Or she might be able to go do a walking.
Well, she'll be able to get full time at least.
She'll write some Greek on her cats.
She can roll, like, if she knows how to use her wheel.
All right, I think possible home neighbors. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God in his little liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Go ahead and do your call. Deb?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
Go with second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, second is?
Motion second to approve the consent agenda? Any questions?
I review the claims, everything matches up.
Now, we'll go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, state some limitations to the administrator update.
All right, a few updates. One, the budget that you all adopted the other day has been submitted to the state. So far, so good. Waiting to hear back. There's a typo on one of our documents, no big deal. So, we have to just resubmit that. But everything looks good. Hopefully, we won't have to do it all over like we did last year. So, fingers crossed. Next, you'll recall several years ago, the city received coronavirus emergency funding. The annual reporting for that was a couple of years in arrears. They were being emailed to an email address that is not, doesn't belong to the city. So, we were a few days away from having to repay $180,000 to the federal government. But we were able to scramble in time. Jesse and I going back and forth with a very draconian federal government reporting system that we had to abide by. But the report was complete. We had to, you know, basically upload all of the expenditures, justify them, categorize them, so on and so forth. So, we're in compliance with that. Emails have been updated, so we'll be able to stay in annual compliance with that moving forward. The Bard annexation you'll see on the agenda tonight. We have a motion to have a hearing, so we'll talk more about that. But basically, the county came back. There was a question about whether or not that was an island annexation. Bard's lawyers submitted a letter and basically said, "No, this is a flagpole annexation, and here's several examples." And the county finally came back and said, "Okay, let's put it in front of the county supervisors for consideration." With that said, because the original language had lot five instead of lot six on the legal description, even though the property is exactly the same, what we decided to do is just start the process from scratch so that there's full transparency, no questions, you know, no trying to wiggle something that we did months ago. So, tonight, that's what the agenda item is tonight, is to just schedule that. The strawberry update, we're gonna have a ceremony during Strawberry Days. Michelle, do you mind giving an update for the public on what's gonna happen for this?
Ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
After parade?
Okay.
Free strawberries and ice cream at the prep.
Nice.
So.
So, you got free strawberries and ice cream, everybody. Looking forward to that. You'll notice that the pipe that's holding the strawberry is painted white. It will not be painted white for long. That's just a primer coat. It'll go back to its regular color, green. We are gonna continue our fundraising efforts for sponsoring the seed. We are still getting some sponsorships in. They're trickling in. But we're gonna do sort of a renewed campaign to close it out, but we wanna keep that going through, you know, until about just a few days before Strawberry Days. While we install the frames in the hallway, you know, the paper that we put in there, we can easily add to and adjust. So, I wanna keep that going. Campbell Park, our guys repaired, made some repairs to the walking track. They had to cut out some concrete to put in some new drain tile. So, that's been done, and the concrete's been replaced. Concrete was poured for the shelter house down there, and the ceiling is gonna be going in, and some grating is going to be done in the coming week or two.
Looks nice.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it does look nice.
Thank you. And then, the pickleball courts, they're in a little disrepair. There's some peeling where it looks like they put down some industrial-type tape or whatever. Now, it's peeling and coming up, and so, we've reached out to the company stating that we think they ought to come back and fix it, you know, at no cost because it should last more than a year. Waiting to hear back from them. I'll keep my foot on the gas pedal on that thing.
Can I mention, too, that I went down there, and that surface is bubbling up?
Yeah, yeah.
Besides the peeling of the...
Yeah, it does not, it does not look like it was, you know...
Installed properly.
Either properly or with the right surface for our climate. So, we'll get to the bottom of it, and I'll update you all when I have some news. And finally, citywide cleanup is on Saturday. Just a reminder to the public, and I'm sure if you guys are getting questions like, "When is it? What's allowed?" Everything needs to be put out by 7:00 a.m. Everything needs to be neatly stacked by the curb. They're not gonna come and clean up a yard. You know, everything has to be stacked by the curb. Tires, TVs, appliances, computers, still needs city stickers, which are available here at City Hall. And then, as a reminder, this is meant to clean up. So, if you've just had the house remodeled and you have a yard full of construction waste, they're probably not gonna be picking that up. So, you know, any questions, you can come to City Hall and ask, call us, or ask any of you who now know what we know. That's it on my updates.
If they don't pick up large piles of stuff, I mean, that's obviously the homeowner's responsibility. And then, what recourse do we have as far as, like, making sure it gets cleaned up and not left on the curb?
Well, they were, they were in here the other day. You know, they drove around town and kinda looked, and there's a couple of houses with an extensive amount of stuff in front of the house, but still neatly stacked out at the curb. I had a heated discussion with them about, and I pulled up my notes from last year, where I said, "If you want to determine what you're gonna take and what you're not gonna take, you should quantify it somehow, whether it's a cubic foot sort of issue or a weight issue, like, whatever it is." They decided not to do that and used vague language like reasonable. And I said, "What you consider reasonable and what I consider reasonable might be way off." So, they're going to take stuff because I told them, "You're gonna take stuff because that's what you signed up for." And then, next year, if you wanna quantify it, we talked about six feet by four feet by three feet being a base and then needing stickers beyond that. And that seems like a reasonable amount of cubic footage. So, we'll see what happens if they wanna take our suggestions for next year. If they wanna keep the language vague, then we'll keep enforcing that they pick up more than less.
Okay.
Were you kinda wondering, too, like, if they don't take something?
Right.
They'll recourse with residents if something's not taken, like, what?
So, like, if, for example, like, if somebody puts out construction material and then they don't take it?
Yep.
That would then trigger, you know, our nuisance property citations, which we've been documenting now. We've digitized that. Should've been in my updates. That was the one thing I forgot. We're now using our internal database, so the police officers or anybody can go around town, take pictures of nuisance properties, upload those right into the database, and then we can issue citations and letters, warnings, so on and so forth from that system. So, that's what would happen.
Okay, perfect.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Now, we'll move on to new business. Number seven, resolution 2518, increasing the strawberry project cost not to exceed $28,000. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, please go.
Okay, so, we got the invoice for the strawberry. It's a lot more than anybody anticipated. Eric and I did make one or two visits up to see the progress as it was happening, and there were legitimately thousands of holes in the strawberry, so much so that the structural integrity was really dangerous. And I'm kinda surprised that it didn't blow off or blow apart at some point. So, the repairs were expensive, and we got the final bill, which I think is in here. And, you know, it's a lot more than we anticipated. Part of the other reason why I wanted to keep our fundraising efforts open, you know, although it's just a fraction of the cost, like, every thousand dollars counts. And I have expressed that, like, in the future, if we do business with that company, you know, when the labor and materials and the repairs are, like, really, really adding up to, you know, a factor that's much higher than what we thought, that, you know, we should be notified so that I can put a resolution in front of the city council during, instead of after the fact.
So, they didn't tell you at all? Like, you just got the bill and you're like, "Oh."
We got the bill and we're like, "Oh." This is, this is a lot.
Because it's like double?
It's...
Almost.
How much was there?
Well, you had fifteen, right?
Well, fifteen was the original not to exceed. And then, the original quote was eighty-five hundred plus labor and materials for the repairs.
Right, and they paint water towers, so it's not the first time they've dealt with the city.
Well, it's correct. Not the first time they've dealt with us. It's...
Or any city.
Yeah, I, I, I'm right there with you. I was a little irked and at the surprise, you know, and, you know, mainly because now I, as the city administrator, have to put an invoice in front of you that's almost double what you thought this project was going to be, and I didn't have an opportunity to put the brakes on it or whatever. With that said, it had to be done, and, you know, so we're kinda between a rock and a hard place. But I have expressed my concern and disappointment at the size of the invoice. Not, not at the size of the invoice, the sticker shock of thinking that the project was gonna cost fifteen when really it's...
Well, I'm assuming they kind of knew what our budget was going into it, too. Like, our thinking it was gonna be around fifty?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, double, almost double what the base was.
I think it's a...
It was an estimate, you know.
They would be like, "Oh, it's way bigger than what you're thinking it's gonna be by, wouldn't it, oh..."
Yeah, so, that's, you know, it's one of those issues where it's been addressed. Like, Eric will tell you, when I got the invoice, I was not a happy camper.
Because, like, at that price, you could've, like, got asked, like, from other people.
Yeah, it likely would've been, like, the repair, they essentially had to build a new boat, like, with all the repair that was done. So, I'm not concerned that the, that the cost of the repair is out of realm with, if there were competitive bids.
Just a lack of communication.
It was just shocking to see the number, you know, and again, it's, like I said, I was, I was angry all day about it.
When they waived our water tower, that came in under budget, though, too, didn't it?
The water tower came in significantly under budget. So, even on this account for, you know, these types of repairs, we're still way at the surplus for the year. So, you know, the financial end of it didn't concern me as much as the surprise of...
Right.
The magnitude of the repairs. So, again, it has been addressed, and I was amply angry about it, like, for at least a day or two. But...
Not much we can do now, is there? Yes.
I mean, we could not pay that. But that would not be good. We should take the strawberry and roll it down. Right, no. No, it's just one of those communication things, like, lesson learned. And I think for some of these bigger projects, you know, maybe we give them the resolution, what our internal estimate was, and tell them, "Hey, if you're getting near this or you think you're gonna get near it, you know, you need to let us know so that we can update our resolution and project price instead of having to have me embarrassingly come in front of you asking for twice as much money as we estimate." So, and that's as much on me as it is on them for not even thinking that, you know, that it would exceed that price.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Number eight, motion to post notice for the annexation hearing for June 4, 2025 for the property noted as lot six in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter at section sixteen, section ninety-one north, range six west of the fifth PM, Placing House Iowa. Make a motion.
Second.
All right, motion second, please go.
Great, so, as I previously mentioned in the, in the updates, this annexation effort, as far as we were involved, like, we've done everything by the book. And the county was insisting that this was a, an island annexation. We were insisting that it wasn't. Bard's lawyers got involved. As far as we were concerned, that we were kind of out of it at that point because it, we, there was nothing else that we could do. But Bard's lawyers did get in touch with the county attorney, and I just got word that, that the county will put it on their agenda. And then, like I said, we had the option of amending our original resolution with the updated language, and I thought it was just better if we just started from scratch, make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
So, this will be on their agenda for their June meeting?
That will be up to them to decide.
And they'll let us, I mean, do we need to send representatives?
No.
To the meeting at all, just...
I mean, I will go. We don't have to, but I will.
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Bard will certainly send representatives. But there's just a lot of gray area in the legislation. Like, as we read the legislation, it doesn't state anywhere in the Iowa code that the county even needs to sign off on it. So, there's just a lot of legal gray area here, and a lot of people looking at it. There will hopefully be some updates to the legislation to make it a little bit more clear because, you know, it's not a, it's not a difficult thing to do. But it's, you know, and we don't, but nobody knows what the process is, and every entity to then just put the brakes on it, like, that's not fair for anybody. Now, for transparency and, you know, making sure, you know, there is a property that is opposed to this, so, we will reach out to that property owner and let her know that, you know, there is a public hearing coming up. We'll let her know what the date, the date and time is so that she'll have an opportunity, again, to come in and voice her objections. And Bard will have an opportunity to come in and address those, you know, those objections, so.
Sarah, reasoning we had to wait till June 4th because of the next council meeting?
Yes.
I didn't know how to be coming.
Yeah, because the, we have to post a notice, a legal notice that has to be a minimum of fourteen days ahead. So, the next time we'd be able to post notice with Tracy will be in next week's newspaper. So, with that, that would take us then to the end of May. So, yeah, that's, yeah. And Bard knows the timeline. They're, they're fine with it. Obviously, at this point, we're, you know, almost a year into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so frustrating.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, this is a piece of land that is not part of Strawberry Point, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
And we're putting this, and it's in the south...
It's straight west.
Yes. Straight west and to the south.
No, and then, and then, and then, north side of the state highway.
Does color one make it easier? Do you have this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, oh, yes, yes. I left out a string there.
So, we come out of town here, and it's right here.
It's this area, right? Is there anything on that now?
No, it's an empty, it's an empty field.
Okay.
And so, we've been in touch with the Department of Transportation. They've issued a, "We don't have an opinion on this." We've been in touch with Cass Township. They've stated that they don't have legal standing in the matter and have no opinion on the matter. So, this will be just sort of like the last step. And then, the county has all of these letters, emails stating, you know, no opinion or no standing. And so, it's really the last step. And it's apparently up to them, although I have yet to see in the Iowa code where they get a vote on it. But there might be some case law. There might be a court judgment or a court opinion that gives them that latitude that's not built into the state code. So, I've asked them to clarify it for us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
All right, on the other business?
I have no other business, but if you all have other business or questions?
Yep.
Eric. I was kinda off, I don't know if the offer on the, sort of the topic. When you come into Strawberry Point from the south, there's that development, the kind of some businesses there, right?
The industrial park, yeah.
I noticed the other day that on the office or on the building there, it says, "The Development Office." Is that used or is that something that exists? Or is there a development director that's part of the city?
It used to exist, and that number is no longer valid. If you remember from a couple of meetings ago, we have about $1,600 in our TIP fund. And that TIP was meant for the industrial park. So, we're looking at updating that sign using those funds and putting the city hall number on there. Because we do have three acres there, that, in fact, that big open field around the turn is still city-owned property. So, I would love to see that developed either for an industrial use or maybe a brewery or a distillery or some sort of business would be really nice down there. But we need to get that number, you know, updated and that sign updated. Luckily, we have the funding to do that.
I have another question. Do you have any comment or any on the things that have happened regarding the pool the last two weeks?
I'm happy to give an update. So, we had, you know, we had applicants that, that applied. And from those applicants, they were sent a follow-up email. Actually, they were sent two follow-up emails and a telephone call from me personally. And out of the pool of applicants, thirteen applicants responded. Out of those thirteen applicants, six of them have other full or part-time jobs, so they would not be able to commit fully to the pool. Six of them are on organized sports teams and would not be able to work the entire pool season. Five are planning on being out of town for at least two weeks on family vacations. Five of the thirteen will not be certified until June or July. And one was interested in being in the manager role but was not willing to be certified as a lifeguard, which is problematic. So, by my calculations, we also gave them the opportunity to say what days and times they were able to work. And so, putting those together like puzzle pieces, I came up with, we have about six or seven full-time equivalents, which is half of what we need to open the pool. There were a couple of applicants that were questionable, meaning, like, I don't think that they were valid. I think they were put in to try to bolster the numbers. But as I was calling everybody, you know, at least once or twice personally, you know, those numbers either didn't go through or was left on a very generic voicemail. I left everybody who didn't respond at least one voicemail, some of whom I called twice. And I'm confident that the number of people that we have, this, you know, seven or so full-time equivalents, is the reflection of an aggressive attempt, not just by City Hall but by constituents who are going out to the schools trying to encourage kids and, you know, other people to do the work. And unfortunately, it's just not working out.
I was very pleased with the number of people that contacted me and wanted to do something. And some went out to the school and actually talked to the students and, you know, tried to encourage them to consider this possibility. So, I guess that was, even if it, we can't put it all together, the idea that there was concern and interest and energy expended to try to get this going was, you know, really pretty good. I think it spoke well of Strawberry Point and its desire to do, you know, the things that maybe we hadn't done before.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm very appreciative of everybody who stepped up and tried to make a go of it. You know, it's like in City Hall, we can only do so much. And, you know, we've got other stuff that we're also working on. And so, it's, it's good to have citizens who are aggressively trying to get the youth in our community to do that type of work. But, you know, and maybe, you know, in future years, people will miss the pool and say, like, this is what happens when people don't wanna do that type of work. Or maybe we find out that it's an amenity that is gone out of favor, you know, and we don't, we don't know what we don't know. And, you know, it's unfortunate that it's come to this, but we are actively trying to think of other things that could be done in place of the pool, other things that youth might be interested in. And I was talking to Larry earlier today. You know, I think it might be a good idea to maybe get a focus group of a couple of different age groups of kids, you know, with their parents that come in and like, and just talk about, like, what are some leisurely things that you'd like to do during the summer? You know, and get some ideas about other things that we can do if the pool is not gonna, you know, be a reality moving forward. So, you know, obviously, we wanna have amenities for them, but at the same time, it's, they have to be safe. And we have to legally have a certain number of lifeguards to be able to open.
So, do we have plans in opening the splash pad?
Doing what?
Plans in opening the splash pad?
Not unless we can figure out a way to block the foot of standing water. Because with, even with the splash pad, with the foot of standing water, we have to have lifeguards underneath there. And we would have to move some fencing around. So, I would say, in my opinion, we put everything into the same bucket, and I don't, I don't know that it's worth opening the splash pad by itself without the pool. There are some thoughts that, you know, having a lot of kids in that area, some might jump the fence on an empty pool. That could be dangerous. So, our internal thought is that it's sort of an all-or-nothing ordeal.
You don't think we could staff, like, a Thursday through Sunday schedule?
I think we could, you know, like, one of those things that it could be tried. I don't think it's gonna be that successful.
I just think once you close this pool, it's done deal. We'll never open again.
And that might be true.
That's probably very true.
Yeah. But it's, it's also one of those things that, there comes a time and a place where, you know, even last year, when we were fully staffed on certain days and times, you know, we would go four or five hours without a single person coming to the pool. And like, the reality is, the numbers are down. And I know that last year, people said, "Well, the numbers are down because we were closed a lot." Well, we were actually closed a lot because the numbers were down. You know, if nobody showed up for five hours straight and it was getting late afternoon, like, you know...
I just think, I think you had, correct me if I'm wrong, that you had an adult manager apply for the position?
An adult manager who was not willing to be certified as a lifeguard.
Right, which is probably not a big issue.
It's a huge issue.
How is that?
Because if...
She'd like CPR certified, but not to me. She has to sit in a chair.
Because we have to have a minimum number of lifeguards. And so, if the manager is not... And so if the manager is not certified as the lifeguard and a lifeguard has to leave or a lifeguard calls him sick, like that manager.
Well, that would be her job as a manager. People stay in past years, it was always the deputy clerk was the manager.
There has to be somebody.
But I'm just saying in past years, the manager was the deputy clerk and they weren't certified.
I went out certified.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did. Great.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll just say it plainly. I don't think the interest in the pool is as big as people think it is. Like I get that it's nostalgic. I get that it was a big deal in Strawberry Point for decades and decades and decades. The reality is kids aren't using the pool. Families aren't using the pool. Nobody's using the pool. We can't justify, in my opinion, opening if we're scrambling to get even a, the minimum basic number of people to, to work in that role to sit there for five hours and have nobody use the amenity. Like it just, the time has, I think, come. And maybe having it closed for a year and people realize what, what they've missed out on changes the scene and maybe more people want to work at the pool or more people want to, you know, be a part of that. But it's, it would not be, in my opinion, a sound decision to open the pool and just spend all that money, scramble to try to get lifeguards there, deal with all the times that they're calling in because they've got something more interesting to do or fighting another job that they might have. It's, it's just not worth it, in my opinion, again. I don't have a vote on it, but that's my opinion.
My fear, I guess, with a council member is we want to get rid of all these things that are, you know, for young kids to come and do. And then when we get rid of all these things, we have nothing.
I agree that that is a concern.
So that's a big concern of mine. You know, the civic center we've talked about, the museum we've talked about. So we get rid of these things and we don't have them anymore, we're not much of a town lot.
Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of towns without a pool. And I, me personally, I would be more concerned if there were a number of people using the amenity. Then I would be really concerned. Like if that was.
That's why I said like if you could do like a Thursday through Sunday and we could staff that, then you're set open those hours, you know, instead of like, oh, we might be open Monday, we could be open Tuesday. You know, like it was just a set time.
Yeah, I, in my opinion, we don't have the staff to even open part-time. We, we've stated months ago and weeks ago what we thought we needed in terms of the number of full-time equivalents to be able to open part-time and to be able to, to open full-time. What we have doesn't even scratch the surface of being able to open part-time based, based on the numbers that we all discussed.
How many did we open the splash here? Do you know?
We opened with six and it was a nightmare.
Yeah, but we did it.
Yeah, and they did really good for two weeks. And then it was, they were calling in sick and we weren't open and, yeah. It just went, people were calling in mad because the pool wasn't open when they wanted to go swimming and, yeah.
So we have twice as many potentially?
No, we don't.
You just said 13, did you not? I know, I understand they're taking vacation and.
Yeah, yeah, no. No, I said we have about seven full-time equivalents, which, and we discussed that we needed 10 to open part-time. Because we need four there. At, at any given moment, we need four there. So even on a, you know, on a, you know, on a part-time basis, if one person calls in sick and one of the three who's not there can't come, then the pool has to close. So it's, it's risky. Like that's why we came up with the number 10 as a minimum full-time equivalent to open part-time. And I think we came up with, what, 12 or 14 to open full-time. And without that, we're just going to have the same problem we had last year. As soon as one kid has a softball game, the entire pool has to close because we can't get that fourth person in there. If the state law was different where we could have, you know, one person there, you know, then that would radically change the, the deal. But if we don't have four lifeguards there, you know, our insurance is not going to cover us if something happens. And so I just, you know, it's one of those things where sometimes you have to make a really unpopular decision. And either people miss it and act differently in the following years or we learn that if the amenity wasn't being used at the same level it's been used in the past and maybe people don't miss it as much as the adults might think we do because like, you know, many of us, I mean, I swam at that pool 30 years ago and it was jam-packed and fun and vibrant. And just from my observation last year and the testimony of other people throughout town, like the numbers have just been dwindling for years, so.
Do you think there'll be damage done by sitting empty?
Will they, that's like physically damaged?
Yeah.
That would be an arrogant question.
Sure. It's going to be your opinion anyway. It's years ago.
How much damage is it really going to be of conservative needs work anyway?
So, you know, so I think there's questions that, you know, you all, you know, can think about moving forward. And that is, you know, do we take the season and, you know, observe how people think about it and decide if you want to pour money into the capital improvements and paint it and, you know, do the improvements for the, you know, the bathrooms and stuff, all of which is budgeted for, by the way. You know, so people thinking that this is a financial decision, it's not. It's not at all. The money is there in the budget. So those are things that you can think about if, you know, if the council long-term wants to take a shot at it and pour that money into the capital investment, later this year might be the time to have those discussions and have that work done and, you know, or not. But I just really think we don't have enough staff. And that's just my honest, and I don't have a horse in the race. I, you know, I don't have an opinion, I mean, I shouldn't say I have an opinion. I'm not actively trying to close the pool. Like I would love for the pool to be open, but I also know how difficult it is to manage. And I know how difficult it is to kick, you know, people out because one lifeguard couldn't, you know, couldn't come in or had to leave. And we don't have a replacement for that. Like that's just a terrible position to put anybody in. So that's, so that's where it was. We didn't hit the threshold of staff, which is why I didn't put it on the agenda. Obviously, it's, you know, it's budgeted. So that's kind of, kind of where we're at.
I have another question out of the pool. We were supposed to have the friends back on the agenda. Did you hear back from the state or?
Did not hear back from the state yet and did not hear back. We didn't get an answer from the owner yet on the letter that we sent. So I'm pretty certain it'll be on the next agenda for a yes or a no on their liquor license. Like I'll just pop over there in the next couple of days and just, you know, reiterate, you know, hey, we need a response to this letter. You know, now that it's gotten warm outside, like I think their, you know, point in all of this was wait until the weather gets warm, not to worry about the boiler, you know.
It'll be nice to see the report from the state.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why we haven't gotten a report yet. I'm a little perplexed by that. And so I will, I'll make a note to put the gas pedal on that, see if we can get it. Because it's pretty expensive. Apparently it was there all day.
All right, anything else? Brandon and Levi, congratulations for being EMTs. Yes, I saw that. Yeah.
Yeah, very cool. Yeah, I should have put that on the update. Yeah. So yeah, now they were, now they'll have to pull some, pull some hours and, yeah. I just, I just want to say too, like on that front, like I'm so incredibly proud, you know, knowing how difficult it is to get people to do ambulance calls. The fact that they have just like completely stepped up willingly enthusiastically to do that.
Perfect example of what we need, like a hundred more people to do.
Yeah, exactly. And so, yeah, I'm just really, really proud of their effort and ability to do that. And I've heard some great stories from their training. You know, and yeah, hopefully Brandon won't have to spend too much time in the back of the ambulance where he gets nauseated. Sorry, Brandon. He's actually umpiring a baseball game. But yeah, really, really great civic duty and I'm really proud of it.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? All right. Thank you everybody.